First, we'll be using their presentation. We had the PowerPoint that the drone students will be using. We deleted and postponed a recognition for Mr. Kerry John. We'll see that next week. We also added a leave request for Rachel Morton, a leave request for Rita Butcher. We revised the percentages in seven B, number seven, the advisor student activism, and number eight, advisor deck of financials. As they were typed as four point eight, so it's actually four point four to the threshold error. We have also deleted super offer as summer school scheme coordinator because the site being identified was incorrect. That will come up next week. And we added an email from Mrs. Kathleen Stevens due to the note, and we deleted the executive session of kind of the schedule for.
Okay, so you need a motion to approve the agenda with all teams.
Motion.
Second, motion by Dale, second by Brad. Are there any questions? Oh, they were. Those same motion here. I should also note too that Mr. John is soon absent tonight on the board. Move on to our recognition for the presentations. First, we have a presentation of the music department.
Terrific. I believe it is Sarah. There she is. All right.
So I just want to take that to say thank you first of all to me for inviting us to be able to talk about, or to, and we're very passionate about what we do. So thank you so much for inviting us. We were asked to discuss the numbers of participation that we have.
As you can see, in sixth and seventh grade, the numbers aren't very high, and those are our COVID kids. Those are the kids that would have started banning code, banning course during the COVID years. And we just couldn't get the interest because there was no way to get the interest. They were at home virtually. It was pretty much impossible. But now we have the fourth and fifth grade who will have now started his normal school years, and we can see what a normal numbers would mostly look like. Also, this is the trends in the past five years. As you can see, those older, older grades, we, we got hit from COVID. This is a nationwide problem and all banned and banned and chorus departments. But as you can see, with those younger generations, we're coming back even stronger than we were before COVID.
Just to discuss some of the, how it starts out, first of all, we, when I first started kindergarten is where we started with music, but we've extended that to the UPK program. So that's really exciting to have Andrew working with them on that. And we have general music for kids UPK through seventh grade. So they receive music once or twice out of the six day cycle. Then, once you come over to Sonica Intermediate, you have that opportunity to join chorus and band. Students currently have a lesson, one pullout lesson a week for thirty minutes or forty minutes, depending on what grade you're in. And they rehearse for band in fourth and fifth grade. Six and seventh daily currently. Then you can start continuing into eighth grade and take either symphonic band, concert band, mixed chorus, or select chorus. Other chorus offerings, because not everybody wants to be a performer. Not everybody loves the stage and likes to get in front of people. So, but they're still interested in music and they still want to play an instrument. So we have intro to piano and intro to guitar. And from what my understanding is, this next year, the interest in that is even higher than what we have right now. And those kids love coming down to the chorus room. You hear those electric guitars in this, around the set, and they're jamming down there. Music theory, which is especially important for those kids interested in going to college for music. So you get into the, the very dry nature of your scales, aural skills, all of that is usually offered every other year. Next year, it is going to be through accreditation through JCC that Daryl Warren has worked really hard to get. So we're super excited for those students to be able to get college credit for music theory. Competitions. Prior to COVID, kids were going to Darian Lake. They brought that back finally this year. They have that up and running at Darian Lake. So the sixth and seventh grade band, Mrs. Longushausen, is taking them. They're super excited about that. And Daryl is taking the symphonic band. Concert band isn't going there this year because they went to Philadelphia. We'll talk about that in just a second. But the mix and select course also usually goes to Darian Lake, and they'll be returning next year. They're not going this year. The concert band, which is our top performers, small band, however, they are phenomenal students. Oh, my gosh. They're so talented. They went to Philadelphia several weeks ago. They were the only one in their class at first, so they got bumped up a class going against a much bigger school district, and they came in first place. They got silver distinction. If they got to stay in their class, they would have been gold. So they sort of mentally say they're gold, okay? But they did place first place, and they got a silver distinction for that. So we're super excited, so proud of them. They performed those pieces in their last concert in March, but you'll be able to see their big plaque and everything if you come to their concert, which is next Tuesday. I'm more, I'm the voting, okay? Different festivals. We have all county, which any of our students in grades four through twelve can participate in. So we send kids for chorus this year and from fourth and fifth grade, same with our bands as well. We were able to host it this year here in Salamaka, and I can say it's one of the favorite sites for most people in the county to come to. And then we have area all state. We had Mitchell Schnaufer and Matthew Schnaufer were both selected for that. And there was an alternate Johnny Madison. Mitchell also went to all state conference as well as all eastern. These are like your postseason things in your sports. For us, this is our postseason. This is, it's very elite performer to be able to make it to all eastern. And then NISBDA honor band, Hugh Mitchell was also a part of, and Matthew was an alternate for it. So we have some very high, high level performing musicians in our, in our high school band. This is not particularly just, this is not, I wouldn't say the music department, but is run by the music department. So other activities that they can be a part of after school is jazz band, run by Daryl Warren, pep band, which they come to some of the football games as well as basketball games. The musical pit, eleven students. It's aren't usually for the musicals, a huge ensemble. And the music for pits are extremely difficult. That is college level playing. That is no joke being able to play that stuff. To have eleven students that would have been able to play in that musical pit is phenomenal. We've had a few over my years. This would have been the most popular. And drum club. Oh, my gosh. The participation in that has skyrocketed this year. Those younger, these fourth, the sixth graders are what is going to be the foundation of our program again. So we're excited to see where they, where they take us. We do have a music honor society for the high school students to be able to, to join, which is called Triumph. Triumph is an honor society where you have to have high academics. You have to be able to play at a high level. You have to have good character and a lot of volunteer hours then go into it once we're accepted into it.
Some community events that we put on every year is the fourth and fifth grade chorus and world of percussion, which I take control of. We do the light up the night parade for the Christmas parade, and when I do world of percussion, I had to take a leave of absence from that because of COVID. We do bucket drumming at Palm Leaves Festival Parade. The high school chorus takes on the casino tree lighting every year, and six, seven band does Veterans Day performances at the American Legion. Then the Memorial Day service and the Flag Day performance of the high school flag pole. And the Veterans Day assembly at the high school is always played by our high school bands.
Some of the kids also don't just stick to here at school. They go into other outside community organizations. So we have some of our kids performing in the Bradford Community Theater. The Southtowns use orchestral, the community bands, and the Ole Miss Community Theater. The facility is, this was really important to mention. No, that is not a facility. We do not have those curtains, but we think it's just as great, okay? We do have the largest auditorium in Cat County. It is, when we go to other schools that have auditoriums for all county, we're not all rehearsing either on the stage or in acoustically appropriate room. I can tell you the elementary band usually is in a gym practicing for two days. It's loud. We have such a great setup here where we can be in the chorus room, the bandroom, and on the stage. Everyone loves coming here. It's some of their favorites. This weekend, we have over eight hundred and thirty plus students attending solo festival here. Daryl Warren is the festival cheerperson for it. As we were doing stickers on all of those adjudication sheets before we came down here, we have schools from Erie County, Catarag, Shetukla, Allegheny maybe. So they're coming from all, I mean, Williamsville, everywhere is coming down here. So we're super excited for them to be able to see what we have to offer our students here. And if you hadn't been at many of my concerts already, when I preached this before or as new to the board, this is my opportunity to have to say the benefits of band and chorus being a part of these ensembles helps to develop language and reasoning, mastery of memorization, learning to improve your work. And that's a tough one. Students are like, yeah, I got my notes right. Yeah, I got my rhythm right. I'm good. No, there's always something where there's no such thing as a perfect performance. And to have to constantly improve your work that carries over into the classroom as well, increased coordination, emotional development, as you can see, the list goes on. And I even shortened it for you. But I think the most significant thing to remember is music students score better in math, science, and English than their non-musicable peers. The latest study, which was of two thousand and twelve, and there were so many more before that, and this is a quote from, it says, students who participated in music scored an average of thirty-one points above average in reading, twenty-three points above average in math, and thirty-one points above average in writing. So as that top ten got announced last week, and I wrote all of them down because I was watching live in my office, all ten of those kids have been in this music program. All ten of those kids were band students, some leave for different reasons, whether it's a focus in where their career path is going to be for certain classes. But they all started out here, and they were all in up until high school and through most of high school. Some still currently are. So I think we strongly believe that because we had those kids since fourth or fifth grade, we had them rehearsing every single day so that we could accommodate their different lifestyles at home and not being able to practice there for some of them. But we brought that to give them what they needed here. We felt like we have a small part in them being a part of that top ten list. Thank you so much for your time.
That was a great presentation. I know sometimes we focus a lot on first academic and athletic, and you tend to forget theater and music. Well, it's nice to be reminded and to see where the program has grown and what a great job you guys are doing, so.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move on to our drone.
All right, then going to turn it over to Mrs. Jackson. Barry, are you, are terrific, outstanding.
First of all, I want to thank you for the privilege to come to talk to you tonight. Over the past four, five months, we've been talking back and forth. In March, we had a conference about how to get recreation ideas intensive. I'm under recreation, I'm the chairman, and for those of you who don't know, I'm also a city councilman. So we, I got to thinking, what can we do? How can we take technology that's in the classroom and bring it outside for kids to play with? So with the help of Mr. Schnaufer and Ms. Johnson and Mr. Howard, we've created a proposal for you guys to understand. And tomorrow, we'll be designing it to the city council to create a drone obstacle course. Cheryl can tell you more about it, but we designed it. The kids helped. They got excited about it, and they ran. They were flying drones through the hall trying to figure out how far apart. I think it's a good idea. We went and looked online, and there's not one within three hundred miles of the so it's something that could bring people in. It's good for the kids. We take technology, bring it outside. Now they get out in the sun. They're having fun outside. So that's part of what we're trying to do. And we also figured out with possibly the fire department can use it for training, police department, whatever group that needs it. When they need to do their drone recertifications, we've got them something to practice. And so far, we've got everything in place. So I'm just coming to you. I want to thank the school for allowing us to work together. It's been awesome just to come up with the idea and then watch the kids build it. And the computer also said that they can use this to earn high school credits, which is making government, which is awesome. Then we can get everybody in one place doing one thing. And the kids will be going from concept to design it and actually putting it, going up and marking the field where it's going to be going. So they're going to get all the concepts and how it fits. And we're proposing it to the council tomorrow. Then it'll be a theme play. The playground that doesn't have a lot of, has a lot of land, but not a lot of good use. So we're trying to do that right now.
Hi, and thank you so much. So we've had, it's been a very fun year teaching the drone course. The first half of the year was working with the kids to get them part one oh seven FAA certified to fly drones commercially. And we have six students who passed their exam, and they now have the little card in their wallet. And they can fly the big drones and they can charge money for their work. So now the second half of the year, if we can go to the next slide, please, thank you. The second half of the year, we're now starting to use the drones. But when Barry came and asked us if we would help them come up with a little drone car, we had to pull out the, the old drones, the practice drones, and the kids got really spoiled flying the big drones. So I do have two of my pilots here. I'm going to ask Adam to come on down and just give you a little demonstration. We figure most people who would come to this would have a drone of about this quality, you know, maybe the, the top quality that they would come with. And I'm, I'm going to start this up right in the middle here. They're not going to come with, with the big expensive thousands of dollar drones. They're going to come with a little fun drone. I know that's a mistake. Adam, Adam's my top gun speaking. A little nervous. So also before you fly here, the Mr. Howard, Sean Howard had, and I think Barry had come up with a bunch of different ideas of obstacles that kids could fly through. And you can see on the map, they're just kind of sketched out. And Sean Howard had drawn them out for us in one of his kid programs. And what we were trying to figure out is what size like of the hoops and what size openings between the obstacles really are going to be good for a beginner and intermediate, and then eventually an advanced. So this is, we had hoops like this set up all over this team room. Let's, we're going to push it under pressure. So these are drones to fly. We would have to keep them level in all this kind of acting. We have to fly against the obstacles. See if these actually know what I'm flying these. If we wanted to call. And so, yeah, I mean, so going through the hoops. But this is kind of a fun place for if kids want to come and try to film. Make some little gathering. One of the things I hadn't thought of, that Barry thought of, it's a challenge to land. It's a challenge to land a drone like on a small area. So we had talked about having platforms. And very soon, we can't do that because birds will make mess on them. So we scrapped that idea. And you can see, it's just a series of little obstacles. And we spread them out over the area.
Some of them are going to be turning with a bend, so you'll have an actually moving obstacle. Two of them will fly your drone and drop down into a barrel. So you're going to lose sight of your drone, both of your minutes, and then when it comes back down, you're about we didn't want to have them fly through a barrel. And if I said, well, whatever breaks down, we can't give it up. This whole park will be about twenty feet up in the air, which changes your perspective to what the kids would be doing normally. They're not originally flying along the ground. They don't fly enough. We wanted to make this something that they would have to learn that's the difference.
That depth perception is really tough when they get up in the air.
Well, a lot of these things are being moving and changing. Some are going to be unchanged totally in the air. It's going to challenge you, very challenging.
So is it going to have the identification like on screen where you have green circle?
No, the poster. This is going to do a poster for us on skill level. People will do this, we'll do this. We haven't quite gotten that far with it, but you'll be able to have a skill level that you can really understand what people could learn. And I'll have a start and stop. Start and stop for it. I think it's going to be really good. Something that can bring in the kids out.
Well, it's a unique idea.
So this, this was one of the projects that we've done, and I just wanted to show you on the next slide, please. This is another project that we've just kind of been dabbling with. It's, it's not a level of drones that has been explored much here at the school. And we took Matt Schnaufer, met me out at Surgeon Point as Mom brought him out, and we did a flyover at the marina. You can see the break wall that's being completely taken down and rebuilt. But this construction company had to build a road to get out to that point. So this area that's kind of a little bit discolored there, that's a different picture. And so Matt did a flyover on the drone. He mapped out where he wanted the drone to fly. Absolutely terrifying. He had fly. It goes up in the air and it does its mission without us flying it. And it came back, and we downloaded the pictures, and he put it into the software drone to map. And Mercy was fantastic at helping us to get that all uploaded. And this is the first map that Matt has made with the drone to map software. And for the contractor to get to see up above what it looks like, he's just absolutely thrilled. Take a look. I just went through a training today, and these dirt piles are the sand piles here, just learning how to fly over those. And then you can calculate the cubic yards of material in there of the drones. So these are all kind of future projects that we will be able to expose the kids to. And drone pilots, licensed drone pilots, they're making anywhere between eighty thousand and two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. And you know, that's without a college education. That's just getting the pilot's license. So having these higher level skills is going to put them up in that higher price range. And then we did also just get a call from the town of Evan. They want a ten second video clip of the shores that, that border the town of Evans that they want to use. So we're working out what exactly we would charge them. So that's kind of where we are with the drone program. We appreciate the funding.
So how many schools around here have a drone program?
I don't know, but I wish I had that number.
I mean, I
Not at this level.
No, I mean, we were the first. At least, you know, even in New York State to offer to high school teams, but that was several years ago. We've had several districts who have come in to see what we do. I know of several that are in the middle of the state around Syracuse area that I run into one superintendent there a few times a year, and you know, he talks about coming here, seeing what we did. They mimic that program there, and it's a pretty prolific program there, so. But it is not, this isn't something that's all of the
What about the accreditation?
Getting those, getting their license.
We're still, it's in a handful.
Yeah. It's, it's about two hundred dollars to sit for this. And I think that's a roadblock for one of the districts. And last.
I think it's important to note what can happen when we have different government agencies that work together. And we're very fortunate here that we have several employees that are both very active with the city and then also exceptionally active in leadership role, both with the city, and then we have leaders within the second nation. And that really helps us to pool our resources, coordinate the efforts that are happening, and these are those great things for our students as well as for the grades. And so this is really a credit to everybody that's involved. So thank you.
Great. That is awesome. A lot of work together. Good things. Next, we have a NISBA award.
Yeah, we do. So the district spends a considerable amount of resources on professional development. And I think it's important to recognize when our leadership team, which, you know, at the highest level is our school board, partakes in professional development in a variety of different ways. And at this point in time, it is my honor to present one of our board trustees, Mr. Brad Hurley, with a certificate of achievement from the New York State School Boards Association for Leadership Development Training, which has accumulated to seventy-five points.
That's awesome. Congratulations, Brad. Next, we have our budget hearing presentation.
Mercy's going to present what we have.
And here's the budget. Thanks. Never grave. Okay, so I have a last, so I can actually see what I'm looking at. So we're starting out with revenues. And as you can see, state aid is the, the largest part of our, our budget. Included in the state aid is a three million dollar increase in foundation aid to get us up to what we should have been receiving in foundation aid for the last couple of years. Along with that increase includes additional reporting requirements for myself, Tiffany, and Mark. Yay. In addition to that, state aid, we have impact aid. We're using about ten percent of that indigenous, about twenty-five percent of our revenues are indigenous, and that's from our tuition and transportation contracts. And then the use of fund balance reserves is about eight percent miscellaneous and tax related are both little cuddly amounts in there to fill out things. The miscellaneous, the large increase in that is due to two things. One, the inclusion of additional interest earnings because we're earning such higher rates now. And secondly, the inclusion of the exclusivity fee coming in from the casino to the state to the city backed us. So here's the details on the state aid. You can see we actually get two notifications of this. And when we had to approve the budget at the last meeting, we didn't know what our final allocation was going to be because the state had not approved their budget. Generally, they are approved on April first, and we have to approve by April twenty-fourth, but they just approved it like last week, I think, a week ago today. So our original basic formula or foundation aid was projected at twenty point three million, and that's actually what it ended up being. So the couple differences, we ended up getting sixteen hundred and eighty-two dollars more than we were originally told in March when those numbers came out. It's just a little bit of differences in our public and private access costs, our transportation, our hardware and technology funding, and in tax costs. So thankfully, it wasn't a whole lot of changes. So same numbers, just in different format, showing you that the foundation aid is seventy-four percent of our state aid revenue, which, you know, makes sense that it's called foundation because it's the foundation of our, of our aid as well. The other largest percent is both The other largest percent is BOSI's aid, which is aid that you receive back on all of BOSI's services that we um, use every year. And the building aid at two point three million dollars is the ninety-eight percent building aid that we get back on any uh, projects that we have. So tax related revenues, again, impact aid, that's the largest piece of it is the ninety-three percent. And then the levy is again, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars exclusivity at a hundred and forty and interest on unpaid taxes is about five hundred dollars. Miscellaneous revenues, this is all the other stuff that really um. It changes from year to year. I have seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in interest earnings in there. I think last year it was like thirty-five thousand, maybe even fifteen. So you can see it's a huge difference in the interest earnings that we're receiving nowadays versus um, before. Hopefully it continues that way and we don't take the plunge like, like we have. The other largest piece, two largest pieces in there is um, two hundred thousand dollars for refund of prior year expenses from BOSI's. If you don't understand, BOSI's is a not-for-profit, so any profit that they make sort of at the end of the year. Any revenues that they receive above their expenditures has to be given back to the components for the districts. And then the other piece, the hundred and ten thousand other services for districts and government. Um, CSE or not CSE, special ed produces a lot of services for TPSE, for the preschool kids. Uh, for testing, for speech and PT and OT and all that other good stuff. And provide those different therapies to those little kiddos uh, through the county and then the county pays us back for that.
That's a nutshell of miscellaneous.
So use of fund balance, we're gonna pull in three million dollars of our fund balance to cover um, expenditures. We're going to use four of our reserves, which is the ERS, the unemployment, technology and workers comp. Those are all by our policy. We input so much money every year, we take out so much money every year and we just continue to keep, keep growing those pots little by little. To cover the increases in costs that we have from year to year. Again, tuition and transportation from Native American, AKA indigenous. We have eleven point two million from tuition and one point five from transportation. That contract actually expires on June thirtieth of twenty-four. So maybe if we tell them now, we might have one by June of twenty-five. But the last year, I think it took almost a year before, the last contract I should say. I think it took almost a year into the contract before they finally approved it. So I'm not sure if their processes have changed at all. Expenditures. So the state wants us to tell you about expenditures in these three categories. Administrative, capital and program. Administrative is just what it says, it's the administration of the overall district. Capital is just that, it's capital, anything dealing with the buildings um. For equipment costs, bussing, uh, no buses are in program. So program is everything else, it's all the instructional costs, it's all the bussing costs to get the kids to school. So those are the three things that we're required um, by the state to present to you. And this I think is more beneficial, in my opinion. I will show you what I'm required to show you, but I think this tells you more. Forty-four percent of our expenditures are salaries, twenty percent are benefits. So that's sixty-four percent of our costs are people. We're a service industry, we don't make widgets, so that makes sense. Another six percent is our debt, fourteen percent is our BOSI's. And on that, we get a lot of aid back, as you can see, seven point two million dollars in BOSI's. But last year, I think we were at six-three, I think at the beginning of the year. We got almost three million dollars in aid back on that, so um, that works out well um, on our behalf. Equipment is at four percent contractual at ten, materials and supplies at two percent. The largest pieces of contractual are the contracts that we have for security. Next, so this is the way the state wants you to look at it. Program seventy-seven percent, which again makes sense because that's what we do here, we're teaching facility. Uh, capital at thirteen and admin at ten. So within the admin, um, costs are the district clerk, personnel department. I distributed uh, which is insurance and leases uh, for the nation. Uh, the BOSI's administrative expense, curriculum costs, supervisory costs. And all the benefits associated with any of the people that are in those categories. Is program, so this covers our legal, our security, our central data processing, supervisory, which is all the principals. Teaching, which is every single instructional person we have. Sensational education, students with disabilities, occupational ed, which is all the students that we send to BOSI's. Special schools, which is a combination of Warrior Academy and our uh, schools that we run over the summer. The library, uh, computer assisted instruction is all the technology. Uh, folks, not, not only Marcy's crew, but also the um, instructional teachers in each class. Or each school building that cover technology. Our attendance officers, our guidance folks and our nurses and our psychologists. And then it continues on with our social workers, our family support liaisons, our extracurricular or co-curricular activities. Which for us are the two major things are OM and ski club. Uh, we're in the, interscholastic is all the athletics, that's all Chad's gang. And then uh, transportation, not only the purchasing of the buses, but also all of the staffing and the garage costs and all that. Recreation is a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And what that is, is a hundred thousand dollars for a new playground at Prospect for the older students. Because that one is predates me being here and this is my thirteenth year, so that one is pretty old over there. Um, and also some upgrades to the cafeterias in uh, both buildings and. Rebranding in the gym, so that's what the one eighty is. And then the benefits are the benefits associated with everybody that would be in this category, which is mainly teaching staff and principals. And then inter funds of three fifty cover um, our special ed cost for summer programming and cafeteria costs. Because we're still not making money in there yet. Next up and finally is capital costs, which are some legal. To cover uh, legal issues with purchasing lands or capital project costs, et cetera. Um, the facilities operations, so all of Rich's gang and everything that they need to operate our buildings. Undistributed BOSI's capital expenses is a number that we get from BOSI's for them to take care of their capital expenses. And then again, all the benefits associated with the folks that are in these uh, cost areas. And then debt service, which is what we still owe on our outstanding bonds and potential bonds. Next, so what happens if the budget goes down? We go to contingent. We'll come back to the drawing board, we'll look at it again and say, are we gonna present the same exact budget up for vote? Or are we going to drop something out? You know, remove a program or something to decrease the amount and bring it back. Regardless, the most our tax levy could be would be the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that it is right now. So even if we drop programming, et cetera, our tax levy is not gonna change. It has to remain where it was last year or no more than it was last year. Um, what that also would mean is that none of those facilities would be usable by community groups unless they're paying full costs for it. So every um, janitor or custodian or cleaner or security guard that needed to be in those facilities. Um, would all have to be covered by whomever is requesting to use them. All of our bus purchases and equipment purchases, we would not be able to do that. And any non-union, non-certified personnel would not have their salary increases by their contracts. And any transfers to capital are removed, but this year we don't have any. That's what happens if the budget goes down. Next, in the vote, it is May sixteenth, which is next Tuesday, starting at noon to nine in the high school gym. And last but not least, does anybody have any questions?
I could just make a note, Karen has been working on this since, when?
December.
December, right, so what you see now is really. Five to six months worth of pretty intense work. And um, I just wanted to express my gratitude for her and her team, uh, but it's primarily her, so thank you, next chat.
What we often say, just ask us and we'll find a way to do it. And now we can't just find a way to do it without the funding and my parents, even though she rolls her eyes and. Still always finds a way to help support the goal of the board to make sure that we can bring the programs and stuff. That for the students in the community, so it really is a, a great job that you do and it's very thankless. So uh, on behalf of the board, thank you for all your hard work and making us look good all the time.
Thank you. It's easy.
Yeah. So next we will move on to our public communication here. What about title six?
I am pleased to introduce our new title six director, Aaron Miller. Um, Aaron, would you like to uh, say a couple of words?
Absolutely, I think the venue is super exciting. Um, I was actually able to go around last uh, couple of days and meet a lot more people um, rather than just being. Having my cave learning title six as if it's like my, my new baby, right? So I kind of liked it um, getting out there, really knowing everybody right away. Uh, really wanted to own in on title six and its entirety to be able to um, do things like, you know, you did the public forum just recently. Um, actually huge, huge tremendous help by Kristen Duda behind me. Um, actually we were able to submit part two of the recent uh, part two of the grant. Um, so that was done on um, May fourth. Um, do you like how she sits right over my shoulder to make sure? Um, but no, it really tremendous um. Um, going submitted, um. Just a couple of updates I wanted to throw out there, really was um, our indigenous parent community, their new parent community. Um, is actually tomorrow night. We actually have a few scheduled, uh, tomorrow night is gonna be one of them, June fourteenth and July twelfth, we're gonna be at a next few as of right now. Um, so this is open to, you know, parents, uh, students. Tribal representatives, uh, teachers, actually encourage as many as we can, especially parents or students. Uh, to come out and at least, you know, check these out, have some input, there should be elections and vote for. Um, nine parent representatives to continually meet on a monthly basis for this IPC, where it is just um, parenting. So really, um, that's, we have a lot of movement coming, you know, they have elections coming up. Um, we do have a lot of people that are at term. Uh, so there's gonna be a lot of moving parts and so if you wanna be involved, especially you know, some of the children in the school. We'd love to have them party, you know, come out and check it out. On night or if you can't, maybe get again, you know, um, to June fourteenth and July twelfth, we have next IPC meetings. And that's kind of where we get together, we create the plan. Um, and our goal is to visit patients and trips all together as you know, project director myself and, and IPC members. Along with the chairman, we're down to create the plans, future plans for from three to four to five as we go. Um, how we're gonna spend out now. Uh, so that's kind of just real quick on IPC, um, you can always reach out to me, Michelle Red Eye. Uh, we actually have a title six case, I believe it's up and running, I might have to get into it and get it more active. Um, that's if we've been a little inactive with the. Solid in size of the position recently. So picked up a lot, um, and, and really trying to get, move this thing forward, um, another thing, um. Just under, just some things coming up that title six has already been um, put in and funded for this coming year. Is we have actually on the twenty-seventh, we have William Proussen, uh, his community involved in his performance. Uh, that'll be at the Senate Nation room. Um, and that's kind of an update event down there, but food trucks, they're gonna have artists, they're gonna, they're gonna be opening up the um, the law house down there. That they have built, I believe all this is on the state. Uh, some things also on the twentieth, uh, we're gonna have our lacrosse training, um, that's gonna be huge, or it's gonna be at vets. And we actually have a lot of local uh, names, Zach Miller, Frankie Brown, Damon Switcom. Um, you know, a lot of these names that are, you know, from here graduated from here, Keenan Seneca. Um, are gonna be there, um, representing their teams, their professional teams and college teams. Um, and we really encourage a lot of the youth to come up, um, we do know that there's gonna be a dance, I believe, or, or something at the twentieth. Uh, but where this is gonna be two or four, so come out, you can make, you can make your dance and stuff like that after. Uh, but so, and then a social, we're gonna have a dance social actually on four to five afterwards. Also encourage other community members and people come up and dance. Yeah, and so that's pretty, I mean, we, you know. They don't tell us when you come in, um, this month, I believe the school has a lot of history with him and those things maybe well. Uh, but yeah, so a lot of these things are just kind of trick updates, uh, I'll kind of keep you guys updated on a monthly basis. Um, I haven't been able to meet with the IPC yet, so tomorrow's actually the first day doing that. Uh, so we have to do the forum, we are listening to part two, we're kind of caught up to where we need to be. Uh, so I've just gotta get comfortable with uh, everybody and keep this thing going.
It's nice to have a representative here. I know, um, Mr. John usually will give us some updates, so it's nice to meet you. Welcome aboard and again, if we've done the group, we need to help support. Okay, and we will move on to central office message. But at the start, Mr. Dean, you.
I have a few updates, uh, two, two themes basically. Um, I just wanted to recognize the things that we do here that are above and beyond, um, just classroom instruction. Um, I want to thank Christina Morrison, she um, has started the Girls on the Run program here. We currently have twenty girls that will be running at the UB um, five K race on June fourth. Um, this is a national program, but we're running it out of the Girls on the Run program out of Buffalo. Um, it comes with a curriculum about healthy eating, confidence. Um, just all around good wellness in conjunction with training for a five K. So these girls have worked extremely hard and their practice race is Tuesday, May sixteenth, she has a huge celebration. Just planned for them and that's the night of the budget vote, so four o'clock at Prospect Elementary, if you want to cheer them on. Um, and I recently was able to visit a couple of classrooms and I want to thank Mr. Morganti. He is a fifth grade classroom teacher and he's recently trying to instill the love of reading in children. So he's, he's been reading a book called Mrs. Frisbee and the Rants of Nim and doing various activities. But he doesn't just stop there, he invites people in to be guest readers and do activities with the kids. So the kids have gotten to see a variety of things. I've actually had the honor of being a guest reader and doing an activity with them. Um, and Mrs. Green's kindergarten class, she created this project and I, I'm sure you've seen it on Facebook called the Alphabet Fashion Show. It was one of the most creative things I've ever been able to be a part of. They created their own clothing out of paper based on a letter. Um, from scratch, based on pictures, cutting things out, really designing it from scratch with their families. Their families were present and then they got to show it off to like catwalk music and stuff, so it was really creative and cute. Um, the second theme of my report is, yes, we're already gonna talk about next year. Um, but I'm extremely proud of the work that our principals have been doing in conjunction with our teaching staff. Um, these past two weeks have been stocked with data meetings and looking at core instruction and supplement instruction for next year. Um, already looking at how to configure September and maximize instructional staff as loud as instructional time. Um, with that being said, I want to thank Nikki Beaver and Erin Ferry for creating a, a new master schedule for next year. That is, it includes all of the necessary components to improve teaching and learning. And I'm just super proud of them because they put numerous hours into it and it's gonna make a huge shift of what our instructional day looks like. Um, and lastly is we are gonna start a before and after school childcare program next year at Prospect Elementary. Um, it'll be, we'll be utilizing an organization called Healthy Kids Programs, there'll be more details to follow. Um, Connect Oaks has been a tremendous help with that, with fire inspection and all of the good stuff that comes with putting in a childcare facility before and after school.
So will that be up and running by the time it starts in September?
Yes, the licensing is already underway. It's actually a program that um, you guys were almost in an approval process for, I think it was in twenty twenty. Um, it's the same exact organization, she came and did a presentation and then. Covid's over now, so we're back in business.
Oh, good, yeah. But I know that'll help a lot of parents out because, um, you know, in our office, we have some parents that. Struggle to find daycare and so people will be the big help, so that's exciting. Thank you. Karen, how about you? You have anything more besides budget? Karen, how about you? You have anything more besides budget?
Oh, heck, yeah. Um, I'm working on two more grant programs, one for the cafeteria and another one for our mandated electric busing. Um, so we'll see how those go. Um, but for the cafeteria, John's been working with um, Gacquio. And a couple of the local farms, so we can get that started uh, come September, that will have um, locally produced. Produce and other products, milk, et cetera. Um. Purchased and brought in for our cafeterias versus getting stuff from way across the state or out of state and that kind of thing. So that's going to be cool. Um, if anybody's interested in buying the buses, the auction ends tomorrow. And the numbers from this morning to this afternoon have gone up. It's around thirty eight thousand, I think it is right now for the buses. Um, in total, there's a couple that are lower, there are a couple that are higher, but every now and then it'll, it'll refresh and, and there's different bids. Two of them are being bid on from somebody from Missouri. So apparently they plan on flying up to drive them down. I don't know. Um, but that closes tomorrow around noon and other than that, it's Budget City.
Well, thank you. We'll move on to our Board of Education message. Start with Flip and you'll make everybody jealous for all those words that Liz done with.
This one's easy.
Is that?
No, it's just sit here, reiterate on the music department, you know, that drone. I was in a band program way, way back when. It is very, um. It has a huge impact on, you know, and I, I still play, so I have tenor sax, no good. I still think, right, but playing, but that drone program, when I was sitting here, I was like, man. You, you, the students have so much offered to them. I was trying to think of what did I have to compare to that drone program? We used to throw paper airplanes. Close the same they had, but I, I just all joke aside, it's like what the school offers. Does, what the staff is doing and what they're creating and the relationship they have with the students is unbelievable. And I can only commend you and just keep on doing that, that kind of work. She's doing great. Keep it up. Proud, proud to be associated with.
No, I just want to thank all the people that came out and did the presentations and then uh, also just to congratulate Brad for getting the award.
That's all. Brad?
I want to thank all the educators and teacher appreciation week. Thanks to the presenters and thanks to the artful presenting.
We thought there wouldn't have been a cave, but.
Um, I, I'd also like to say, I'm very excited and proud and I'm actually moving everywhere. Um, that's what we've dedicated to teachers, but um, really teachers are everybody associated with. They could be a bus driver, cleaner, um, administrators, teachers with assistants, anybody. You know, has that, that uh. That form against the kids, you know, to, to uh, teach themselves. And I just want to say thanks to.
Yes, um, I'd like to say that I had the pleasure of going to Moana Junior. That was awesome. Uh, and we do have a lot of young theatrical performers. Uh, and it was awesome to see how excited they were and just what a great job they did. Um, the presentations tonight are awesome because, you know, my kids are at school now and um. You kind of lose track of what we have to offer and it's nice to be reminded of all the good things that we're doing. Um, and again, um, I know there was the chef's lunch in on Friday. Um, for everybody and that's to say thank you for your hard work, even though it's just a lunch and I make, you know, it's, and just. A little small thing to say, we appreciate you, but as a board, we do appreciate everyone, the whole staff. Um, and just like Dale said, it's not just teachers, um, it's everybody. It's your, who knows, your bus drivers, everybody that touches a child's life that can make a difference in a child's life. Because again, all it takes is one person to notice it to make a positive impact on a kid. That um, sometimes goes unnoticed. So it is appreciated and we are very thankful. And again, anything we can do as a board, how, let us know. And that's speaking to the students and to the staff. Um, that's why we're here. You know, it's not the pay. Believe me, it's not the pay. Ah, because we don't get paid. So, um. We're here to really help and build the community. And again, you know, Barry's not here, but. Even projects with the city, with the meeting that we can all come together. For the community, for the students, for the staff, that's, that's what we're here, that's what we're about. So. Um, I'll quit rambling and we'll move on with the agenda.
Sure, uh, just a couple of notes. Um, you know, we enter now this week into, uh, as you said, teacher appreciation week. There was uh, food help order, food service hero week, or a day, which was last week, which was terrific to see. I think it's really important, um, as Mrs. Ray indicated that. You know, the board and the district really truly appreciates all of the employees. If everyone, the employees of our district makes. Um, and has a significant impact on the lives of children. And no matter what your role is within the district, everyone is important. And I know if Mr. John was here, he would speak to um, what it's like being married to an educator. I had the good fortune of being married to an educator as well and I hear her um. What she goes through on a daily basis. Uh, I hear her when she's working with students after school, uh, tutoring in one way or another. And I think it's good for me to just always be grounded because I know she'll always tell me the truth, uh, to say the least. And um, really for all of our educators, we really appreciate them much more than we could ever uh, show with a, a lesson. Um, but I was the recipient of many thank yous for that, so I do want to pass it on to the board that um. Many of our employees here were very appreciative of the service. Just a couple of other notes, um. You know, our administrators do an awful lot, not just within the district, um, but also outside of the district. And I just wanted to recognize one of them, uh, Mrs. Dudek is heavily involved with Parent Network of Western New York. The Parent Network provides support for parents as well as other professionals that work with students with disabilities. I know Mr. Precese is also involved, um, as we have been at various fundraisers together. But uh, most recently, Mrs. Dudek has been elected as the chairperson for the board of the Parent Network. Um, as well as the chairperson of the executive committee of the Board of Directors. Um, she has also had the State Education Department here today for a onsite audit. Of our pre-K program, which uh, from what he said, went very well. Is there anything that you want to mention about the audit?
No, I just want to publicly thank FALD, um, the Cataract is Ringling Head Start and Kim Hope's and the Santa Prospect. Without everything that they did, including the two workups that here and we uploaded to the state, um, in order to get ready for today's audit. We couldn't have helped be there, but everyone did a phenomenal job, especially our four-year-olds that made sure that they go from the auditor with open arms and left.
One last thing, uh, yesterday I had the opportunity to collaborate on the planning of a major um, emergency drill that we're fighting for this upcoming November. Uh, and we're going to be meeting every two weeks uh, from now until November, so that'll give you some idea of the scope of this particular drill. And I just continue to be impressed that we have so many people in the community that come together. So yesterday, um, in the office, we have representatives from Salome Fire Department, Salome Police Department, Seneca Nation Marshals. Get County Emergency Services, the Sheriff's Department and First Response, who we use for armed security. They were all on hand to begin the planning of the event, um, and determine what training is going to be necessary as we begin to escalate uh, toward that big coming event. So you know that we've said in the past, uh, you know, safety and security is not in our four board goals. It's simply an expectation and we will do everything necessary to ensure that we have the safest, securest environments for our students as well as for our staff. Thank you.
Thank you. And congratulations, Kristen, that's really. We will move on to our consent agendas. We need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion by Brad, second by Flip. Are there any questions? All in favor, I oppose abstain, motion good. Next, under our policies, we have uh, policy seventy three fifty and eighty four sixty. Um, so we need a motion to approve both of those policies.
Motion.
Second, motion by Dale, second by Ted. Are there any questions on any of the policies? All in favor, I oppose abstain, motion Gary. Item seven under new business is our contract with everyone BOSI's. So the uh, motion to approve the contract, we're going to pay them, not that see twenty nine thousand, four sixty four ninety two. For the high school. Item B is the creation of several positions, which I will not read. Uh, but are attached to the agenda, so we need a motion to create the position.
Motion, second.
Motion by Ted, second by Flip. Are there any questions on any of these positions? All in favor, I oppose abstain, motion Gary. Item C is the abolishment of positions, so we need the motion to abolish the position of the community agenda. Second, motion by Dale, second by Brad. Under any questions? All in favor, I oppose abstain, motion Gary. Item eight is our personnel and son agenda. So item A, B, we need to approve the personnel and son agenda. I need a motion, motion my Ted, second by Flip. Are there any questions on the personnel and son agenda? All in favor, I, I oppose abstain, motion Gary.
Is she reading it right? She gets to, you're right.
Um, we have any of our principals, alright, so.
Alright, so it is my pleasure to recommend Chelsea Beaver, her tenure elementary education teacher. Um, before joining the Salomega team, Chelsea um, was a substitute in several districts throughout Western New York. Um, then she joined our team as a uh, teaching assistant for one year, supporting multiple grade levels. And then after a year as a teaching assistant, a first grade uh, classroom position opened up. And Chelsea interviewed and was a successful candidate for that first grade teaching position. Um, so this is her fourth year in one of our first grade classrooms. And Chelsea is someone that she convinced me that she knew from a very young age that she um, wanted to be an educator. So she was volunteering classrooms and would go into her cousin's classroom and help. And her summers were spent in various family member classrooms as well. So. Um, Chelsea is a teacher that builds strong relationships with her students and she gets to know them very well. Her expectations are very clear. Um, she is always one that she greets students. Um, in the main entrance of the school every morning. She supports our before-school programming, after-school programming. Very hardworking, we're fortunate to have her and congratulations to Chelsea.
I want to listen to you. I know, is there anyone else?
Uh, it is a great pleasure and honor to recommend ranking here to Jen Kyra as reading specialist. Uh, also being a Sonic intermediate principal and formerly and formerly and formerly observing Jen, I have found her to be compassionate. Committed to our students. She collaborates with her colleagues and her students best in set heart by providing differentiated instruction to best support their individual learning. And Sarah has a strong understanding of intervention services and that consists of her approach to teaching reading. She has routines and procedures in place that create an environment that is conducive to learning and support our students. I have a passion for children and commitment to lifelong learning, not going, congratulations Jen.
We do have two others, um, but we will make sure that we acknowledge them when we see them again. I know Stevens uh, did send a note saying she was unable to come tonight. But she wanted to personally thank all uh, us, uh, or all the board for Grant and Kyler. She did it. It's a great honor and privilege to work at the high school that she graduated from in nineteen something. She says, please don't do the math. So, uh, she is very appreciative.
I won't do the math anyway. So I'm like twenty nine. Congratulations, everyone. Thank you for coming to the board meeting. It's great. I guess I sometimes like to draw schools, so we lose track of future. So thank you. And congratulations to everybody. And with that, we have our board information reports, we have our public meetings, our capital project summary. In the moment, we are advertising data and again, our upcoming events. As Mrs. McGarrett mentioned, uh, May sixteenth is our annual budget vote. Uh, in order number elections, so please come out and vote, which I'm sorry to talk about. Uh, but I just am encouraging everybody, please come out and vote. We do have a finance mini-meeting also on the sixteenth that's happening here. Uh, and again, our busy night, high school, the end of course concerts at the high school, uh, the art show. The steam bear, uh, and then the eighteenth of the third grade concert. Uh, so please, everybody come out and see all the great stuff that our students are doing or attend our concerts or as much as you can. And that is all I have. And with that, I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion.
Motion by Flip, second by Dale, all in favor?
I, I.
Oppose abstain, motion Gary. Thank you, everybody, for coming and a great week.